Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is student reports. Do we have any student reports? If you'd come to the mic and give us your name, please.
Hello, my name is Birona Canovin. I'm a member of the Knox Trail National Junior Honor Society. On Saturday, December 6th, Knox Trail students traveled to Lake Street School to assist with their Santa breakfast. Our basketball teams traveled to Oxford today for their first game of the season. Some after-school news is the programming robotics club, art club, and engineering club have all been meeting regularly after school, providing enriching fun activities for students. There's also after-school math to help for students on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 2:10 to 3:30 p.m. Please contact the school for additional information. The annual tacky holiday sweater contest will take place on Friday, December 19th. Staff and students are encouraged to make a $1 donation to participate in the chance to be crowned the king or queen of tacky. All proceeds will benefit two local charities. Lastly, peer leaders are sponsoring an after-school movie on Thursday, December 18th. Admission is a scarf, hat, gloves, or mittens for a giving tree, or a $2 donation for toys for tots. Thank you, and have a happy holiday.
Very good job. Mr. Bayshon, are you a student?
[laughing] I'm a student as well.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, my student could not make it this evening, but I have a few things I'd like to mention. College acceptance letters are arriving every week. Congratulations to the following seniors. Danielle Huston, Anna Maria College, Melissa Johnson, Cedar Crest College, and Mount Ida. Terry Lidle, Nichols College, Jackson Paul, Middlebury College, and Tobias Simonovic, Becker College. Congratulations to those kids on their acceptances. Also, Student of the Month. We call it Panther of the Month Award, put on by our AP class. Stanley Kalaski, Olivia Lamaro, and Timothy Tran were November's Panther of the Month Award winners. Project Give and Work Experience news. Last month, our students started the monthly social recreational projects with Nichols College. The students were treated to a tour and lunch by the students. They also participated with the Student Council at the Special Olympics Botchy Tournament at Grafton High School. Thank you to the Student Council members and Mrs. McLaughlin for partnering with our students for this special event. Finally, they held their annual Thanksgiving feast at St. John's Church in East Brookfield. Thank you to all the parent volunteers and students for working so hard for that event to go off successfully. The David Proudy High School Show Choir Shockwave made their debut at Bay State Show Choir Festival in eastern Massachusetts at Oliver Ames High School. The students spent two days with Judy Hansen, the director of the Chicago Children's Chorus, and Ellie Jordan, the Midwest choreographer. They learned dance numbers and a ballad, which they performed with 450 other students. They also performed their own show and received a tremendous applause from the show choir community. Congratulations Becky Bucier and those students for show choir. David Proudy High School will be holding its annual holiday cabaret, December 18th, 7:00 p.m., in the auditorium. Tickets are available at the door, $5 per person. That's fantastic. If you haven't seen them, the band, John Wage, Becky Bucier, and the students just put on a tremendous show. I'm amazed at the talent we have in that building. And if you come there, it's probably the best $5 you'll spend. So again, December 18th, 7:00 p.m., in the high school auditorium. I also want to give a shout-out to Mr. James, Mrs. Rabino, and Mrs. McLaughlin, who helped a lot of the students at David Proudy High School, put together a float for the parade of lights. They came in third place, but they worked quite a few late days on that float, and thank you to them for participating. Finally, on Thursday, January 8th, at 6:00 p.m. at David Proudy High School, we will be hosting a parent-student orientation night. All eighth graders and their parents are invited to attend and get a taste of what David Proudy has to offer. It's going to be unlike anything we've ever done before, and I think it'll give those parents and those students a pretty good idea of what goes on every day up at David Proudy High School. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any other reports? Okay. Next item, hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Okay, moving on. Secretary's report. Members, you have in your packet the approval of the amendments for November 18th, 2014. Unless there's any questions or corrections, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Napkin. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So voted. Next item, financial report. Approval of the expenditure report. You have that in your packet. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that? It's pretty straightforward. The top number is the amount being transferred. The bottom number is where the categories it's being transferred out of. No questions? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Cludia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Napkin. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Unfinished business. Business administrator search update. At this time, we still do not have a candidate to bring forward for the business manager's position. The superintendent and the chair will continue to work. We're continuing to take applications, and hopefully we'll have someone to bring forward sometime after the first of the year. Next issue, bullying and intervention plan. Dr. Zaleski? Members, you've had this in your packet. There were changes that some members wanted to have made. We were given the opportunity to put those requests in writing, let's speak to the superintendent. And Dr. Zaleski has now put together a revised copy with our suggestions and stuff. Do you want to make your presentation, Karen? Then if any of the members have any questions, we'll...
Sure. All of you have received the revised policy. Emergency response and bullying, they go hand-in-hand. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Cludia for outreach-ing me and asking very specific strategic questions pertaining to both of these plans. And he and I did go back and forth via email dialogue, and the changes that you see reflected in these packets are based on that feedback. So, thank you, Mr. Cludia, for that. I appreciate it. If any other members have any further response to what's been placed in the packet, please let me know. Otherwise, we should make a decision about voting on these plans, because in order to implement them for the district, I need to have them voted on. The basic changes that you see, based on the feedback from Mr. Cludia, and then just general changes that we've made in terms of telephone numbers and things like that, are pertaining specific to school committee involvement throughout the plan. That was big, and I know, Mr. Hayes, you had brought that up as well at our last meeting. So I did embed that in the plan, and both plans, actually. Where in the event of any type of emergency and any issues pertaining to the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan, school committee has direct involvement. So, I think that that was valid feedback and necessary to put in the plan. Other than that, the other changes that you see, like I said at the last meeting, pertain directly to the changes in legislation, which is, we need to have that in there, because those are mandated. So, if you have any other feedback, I'd...
Are there any further questions by any members of the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Nodquist.
I just want to say, thanks for highlighting the points in this, because it really makes it stand out a lot better.
You're welcome.
And second of all, is this a permanent thing, or a three-year plan, or subject to change, or what?
So, every year.
Every year.
Every year it comes up for review. Yep. Every year, because legislation changed so quickly, and policies and procedures at both the state and federal levels can change. So, every year I review it. And every year, even if there are no changes, I usually bring it forward for review, just so that we can all know that we are voting to keep the continuing plan in place. And because sometimes strategically, things can change at the building level, too, in terms of like maybe where AEDs are stationed and staff changes. So, every year it really does come up for review, regardless of legislative changes.
Any other questions from any members? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Would you care to have a motion and a vote tonight to approve both of these plans, so that Dr. Zaleski can put them in place?
I'm fine with it.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion. Is there a motion for approval of the bullying and intervention plan?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the...
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Napkin. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Is there a motion for the emergency response plan?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Napkin. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is revolving athletic report. This was discussed at our last meeting, and there was some further requests by Member Nodquist in regards to this. I see the athletic director is here tonight. Chuck, did you obviously put this report together for the treasurer? Would you care to come up and go through it? And if any members have any questions, we'll address them to you, and...
So, I believe you had the first page at the last meeting. We did update that, putting our last football game on. But the second page is the breakdown, game-to-game. Little key to the right there for girls' soccer game is GS, and FB for football. And it gives you the column for our gross receipts taken in, and then what is paid out for ticket takers and game administrators. So that was the fall of 2013, the winter of 2013-14, and the very back page is this fall, all the games that we had gate receipts for. The lowest gate receipt was on September 15th at a girls' soccer game, $245. There were 46 adults and five students paid.
I noticed, looking at the numbers, and I know this all goes in cycles with high school sports, but I'm assuming the decline in the receipts from last fall and this fall is probably the number of people we have participating in those sports is reduced now, so there's less parents coming?
Yes, I think that's one of the factors, but this was our year to not have Thanksgiving. So last fall, we had Thanksgiving, and that's anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 as a gate receipt.
Yep. Overall, it looked like all the collections that are taking place are all profitable and stuff.
Pretty much, yeah.
Wine certainly is.
Yep.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Fay in regards to this? Mr. Nodquist?
Mr. Chairman, I asked for this report, and I want to say it's a well-done report, like I asked. Just one question, I think I got the answer. Game administration, is that for the referees?
No, that's for administrators at the games, overseeing the games. Afternoon boys' soccer games, we have to have administrators. Any night games, there has to be somebody in charge. It can't be coaches.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
And is that an MAIA requirement?
The boys' soccer, it is, and they're now putting that up to have it for girls' soccer games also, I guess.
Yep. Any other questions for Mr. Fay? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the student handbook for the high school. This was also on our agenda last month, and some members had some questions. I think you've had an opportunity to speak, everyone on the board has, to the superintendent and bring those concerns up. Mr. Bayshon, do you care to go over any of the requests were made to you, or does the board prefer to just start with questions if you're already familiar with what you want answered?
I'll answer whatever questions you have. I do know that you just heard, you know, Dr. Zaleski referred, the bullying policy will be an addendum to our handbook once that's finalized. So that's not in there yet. Until it's finalized, then we'll put an addendum in there. So that will be in here.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to any of the handbook or the program of studies that Mr. Bayshon presented last month?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I had forwarded my questions to the superintendent regarding this, but my questions basically were, could you go through the changes and... Because there was no explanation...
The rationale?
Yeah. Why it was being made. And I really didn't understand why some of the changes were being made, that's all.
All right, I'll start with the program of study. Okay. Page four, we have a change of a course name from Intro to Algebra, Geometry to Survey of Basic Algebra, Geometry. The colleges like that word, survey versus intro, sounds like an eighth-grade course. It's kind of... And the reason these kids have this is they haven't reached the platform yet to take Algebra I. They're not quite there, so they take this probably semester one, and then semester two, dive right into Algebra I.
Dave, while you're on that subject, do we have any program in place? I read an article in the paper the other day, and I forget, the school district had some relationship with Quincyman College in regards to the AccuPlace test?
Accuplacer, yes. We do...
We have that?
We administer that at our school. Yes, we do.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Page 11. Eliminate from a student having a passing grade for one term in one unit course... I'll just make it, I'm going to tell you what it is. In the past, if a kid has a semester course, 20 weeks, they had to pass one quarter to be eligible to take summer school. Okay? And if they had a 10-week course, they had to get a 50 or better. They're making it a 45 or better on the half a unit. And then, if you look at it... I'm getting... Hang on a second. In order to be eligible to take summer school for a semester course, you have to get the 45, and then you can... Let me look at it. I had this down to a science. It was, like I said, it used to be, you had to pass one quarter. So the average grade is, you need a 60 or higher with the grade that you received in the semester course to have it accepted. It'll be averaged in with the summer school grade for it to be accepted. Page 15. Prerequisite will not apply for Accounting I standard college. It'll only be for Accounting I honors, because we do use Accounting I standard college as a math credit. For kids that might be a senior, they need an extra math credit, they can take the standard college in Accounting I. CIS, Computer Info Systems, is a half a credit class. We want to make CIS I, CIS II. Require all freshmen to take CIS I. They'll be focused on Microsoft Word and PowerPoint. And then if they receive a passing grade, they can take CIS II. It's another quarter course, where they're going to be offered Excel and Access in the Graphic design, it was always open to grades nine through 12. We're going to just have it open grades 10 through 12, and we want those ninth graders, of course, to take CIS first, just so that they have some computer literacy when they walk into their graphic design class. There's kids in that class now that can't find where they save their grades, because they don't know the basic understandings of how the system operates. Marketing program, marketing for sports and entertainment, half a unit. Open it up to more kids. We do have marketing program, but this is strictly for sports and entertainment, and it's open to grades 10 through 12. Concert band, what we're adding is honors, so it's going to be taught in tandem. If the kid is an honors concert band student, he'll be expected to perform a solo, like he's applying for a college or whatnot. Delete history of rock and roll. Change the description of music appreciation. Mr. Wade, he does... There is one mistake there. Deleting Music Theory II is a mistake. We're going to keep Music Theory II. So Music Theory I and II, just change in description. Mr. Wade would like to add jazz studies. If you would like... You want me to read the description, or you're good?
That's fine, I think we've voted.
And he wants... That's a half a unit. That's a 10-week course. And he wants to add percussion ensemble. All of this is to help him... You know, over the years, the bands at the lower levels has been cut and whatnot, and he needs this extra practice to maintain, to keep these kids' skills where they should Ecology, environmental science, honors. We want to change that, open to grade nine through 12. It used to be open to just juniors and seniors. And we want to change from a one-unit course to a half a unit. Rather than have these kids in there for a semester, it might attract more kids to get them in there for 10 weeks. Some of them... Just open it up to more students taking that class. We've had the numbers fall, and I don't think they get involved in that course as they should. We have additions to the science department with funding approval, so Mrs. McLaughlin would like to try to start an alternative and renewable energy course, 10-week class. It's going to come down to if we have the funding. AP Prep U.S. History. Add to the description, it's strongly recommended that students take this course prior to enrolling in AP U.S. History. That's open to students in grade 10. And then in the AP History class, add, it is strongly recommended that students take AP U.S. Prep, so... On page 45, Holocaust and Human Behaviors. It's a 10-week course. Add to the description, there is no formal textbook for this class, therefore attendance is critical. She just wants that added to her description. Page 46, change Principles of Economics to Principles of Economics and Government. We want to try to get a little civic component in there. That's kind of lacking in our school, you know, the civic government aspect, so we're going to put that in there. And finally, Robotics. In addition to the technology with funding approval, we'd like to add a robotics class. That's something I've always wanted, as long as I've been there. It just comes down to funding. So, that's it for the program of studies. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on any of those items? Mr. Nodquist?
I'd just like to say that I had some good ideas, Mr. Bayshon, and thanks for thinking outside the box.
You're welcome. What about the student handbook? Are we good with that, or do you want to go the same thing through the changes?
Are you prepared to go through those changes, Dave?
Sure. And if I get stuck, I have my assistant principal, Tom Lotta, who worked with the committee to make these, but I'll go through them. Revisions. I'll just go right down to revisions first, if you care. Add to fire drills, teachers will close windows and doors upon leaving the classroom. Once outside in a designated area, teachers will conduct attendance. And we're going to add the lockdown and stay-in-place procedures after the fire drill paragraph. And this is all per Chief Parsons. He thought this would be best in our handbook. Student dress code. Add number two, unless prior approval from administration. It's talking about the dress code. Bottom line, we have a lot of repetitive ones. We don't want the short skirts, if they put their fingertips on the side. The dress should reach the fingertips and whatnot. We're deleting no spandex or biker shorts. It's already suggested in there, we don't want short skirts, short shorts. Delete number 10, any item of clothing that has been intentionally torn or cut to create holes. Again, inappropriate clothing, we can deem that, pretty obviously. Add to the end of the school principal paragraph, this includes all school sanctioned activities, i.e. games and dances. It used to just say "school." We want to make sure it includes all activities. Chartiness to school and class, delete the paragraph, beginning with any student arriving between. Change it to any student who arrives to school after, with. Any student who arrives to school after the start of Block Two will be considered truant and will receive a PM. Also, he or she will not be permitted to participate in any extracurricular activities unless approved by the administration. Make-up procedures. Students will have one week to make up work. It was two weeks. I think one week's sufficient. Policy for a smoke-free environment. Change the first offense to one day of in-house suspension, and delete the fourth, fifth, and subsequent offenses. Also add, and this we did not have in there regarding the electronic cigarettes, according to state law, paragraph, including the electronic cigarettes. That's become a real big issue right now statewide. Social functions, delete number one and edit number seven to read as follows. Students will not be allowed to leave a dance until 30 minutes prior to the end of the dance. I don't know, we don't know where they're going. We don't know if their parents know where they're going, but they'll come to a dance, they'll stay a half an hour. We're out of here, and it just makes us nervous.
Dave, do we currently do in-house suspensions?
Yeah, we do, and our teachers are covering it for us right now. Or if we have a substitute in for the day, and they have a free block for that teacher, we'll put them in there.
In the past, was that a position by itself that was cut out?
Yes, it was.
So it's been cut out along the...
It's been cut, yeah. And it's just nice, because they're still in the building and they're doing work.
Yep. Any questions for any members? Mr. Billy?
Just item six, the expectations of classroom behavior. I think you skipped over that one. First page, the bottom. On your changes.
Oh, I was doing... I'm sorry, I was doing revisions first. That's an addition, sorry. I was in the revision column, I'm sorry. Expectations for classroom behavior, add five. Each teacher will establish the rules and procedures for his or her classroom, including electronic devices. So basically, you know, we say no cell phones are allowed in the classroom. You come in the classroom, you put them away. They're allowed to use them during, in the halls, or during lunch. In the classroom, we put them away. We're trying to say it's the teacher's autonomy, you know, if they're going to use it effectively in your instruction. You know, ask a question, the kid can text back and answer, something like that. We'll let them, give that teacher that autonomy to say, I'm going to use it for research or whatever, but not for anything else, not for, you know, the texting. It's going to be difficult, of course, but we like to give the teachers the opportunity to use those devices.
I guess the only comment that I have to that is, if we adopt a district-wide, you know, policy with respect to electronic devices, I think this could conflict with that. And that's what we're in the process of working on as a district. And you may or may not be aware of that. We've been talking about it for a couple of months. We've been talking about, you know, when is it appropriate, what the rules should be and shouldn't be. And I guess my only concern is that if we're going to give the teachers, and I'm just kind of throwing this out there...
Sure.
We're going to give the teachers the autonomy, so that when a student goes into Classroom A, you can do A, B, and C. You go into Classroom B, you can do, you know, X, Y, and Z. You know, we send mixed signals to the kids.
Just, I don't want to misrepresent like it's a free-for-all. It would be, the teacher would say, okay, take out your phone, we're going to do this, I want you to look this up right now. Boom. Something to that effect. And again, this is, that's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah. I think to Mr. Cludia's point, depending on what the board comes up with for a district policy, I think that will certainly trump any policy.
That will trump anything that we decide. Correct. Absolutely. Yeah, because we're actually working on that every Monday as well.
Anything else? Any other members? Do you have anything else, Dave?
No. Housekeeping. You know, we're deleting in a paragraph on bus behavior, don't play in the roads. I think, I don't think we need that in there. And kindergarten screening. I guess we used to have kindergarten at the high school, so we're eliminating that from our handbook.
Yep.
What was... Excuse me one second.
Yep.
You want to... Dr. Zaleski wants to talk about the coordinated program review.
Yes, Dr. Zaleski.
I just wanted to let you folks know, and I didn't have a chance, Dr. Crowe, to talk to you about this. I apologize. I received a word from the state this afternoon. I received an email that we received corrective action responses to our coordinated program review. It's not on the agenda tonight, because I hadn't had it at the time that the agenda was put together for the school committee. But the reason I'm even bringing it up right now is, one of the corrective action areas But the reason I'm even bringing it up right now is, one of the corrective action areas is going to pertain to civil rights matters and gender identity, which is going to impact handbooks. So I want to let you know that however you vote tonight, we'll probably be up here again with an addendum. Just as a briefing for if any folks sitting at the, on the board right now are not understand the coordinated program review process. It's a six-year process, so six years ago they conducted a review, and every six years they do another review. And at the time of the review, when they came out, I was in position a year and a half, but it doesn't matter, I have to look back at the six-year timeline of what's taken place in the district, and I'm trying to correct that. But I just wanted to let you know, I am aware that one of the areas is going to directly relate to civil rights, and we may be up here again, however you vote tonight, we may be up here again looking at addendums for all handbooks, not just the high school. I haven't had a close enough chance to scrutinize it because it just came out today with the, you know, the, the state response to our district response, and I'll have more information. It's my intent to prepare a full presentation in, in January with Dr. Crowe's approval of those items.
So, would you be prepared to come forward with a final package at that time? Because I would prefer not to have addendums, so if this is something that can wait until...
Yeah, so, so the coordinated program review requires a district response by February 26th. So, but I, that has to give me time to work with all administrators, as well as Dr. Crowe, and members of my team and staff across this district to correct the action areas. They're lengthy, and like I said, it's a six-year timeline, so things that have happened during, when I was not in position, I have to go back and look at root cause analysis and, and make corrections and try and figure that process out. So, so yes, in January I can give a presentation to this board on those areas. However, we have until February 26th to respond to the state, and it has to give me time to work with the principals on those corrective action areas. So, I guess the short answer, Mr. Hayes, without confusing you, is, in January I have informed Dr. Crowe I will be able to have a response to the board. However, I cannot promise you that the handbooks will be ready with those corrective changes by January because it's just a time-consuming process that involves professional development training, as well as making all the areas. And again, I haven't looked at it in depth because I just got the email before I came to school committee tonight, so I don't know the intricacy of the details of all of it. But I did briefly look, and I saw something in there about civil rights, gender identity, handbooks, and I got a look, I have to take a deeper look at that.
I, I think, I don't know if, how the rest of the board feels about it, but my position, Dr. Crowe, would be that I, I think the less addendums that we have to have for a handbook, the better. So I would, I would ask if the board is in concurrence that, that you have this prepared for us at the January or February meeting, the latest, with everything in place so that the board can then vote that night. We certainly would want it, you know, prior to that, to be able to review and stuff, but just so that we can get everything in place. Is the board in agreement with that? Does anybody have a different idea?
That's fine.
All right, thank you, Karen. Do you have anything else?
I just want to clarify, because I was really talking kind of silly here on this summer school, and I want to make sure you have it right, you understand it right. The old way, you had to pass a quarter of a semester course, so the kid had to get at least a 60 in one quarter to be eligible for summer school. We've, we're proposing to change that. If the kid gets an average of a 45, both quarters together, he's eligible for summer school, 45 or higher. However, that final grade, if it's a 45, is taken with his summer school grade, it's going to be average with his summer school grade, so he's going to need at least a 75 to get a 60 and pass in summer school. I just want to make sure, I was kind of confused myself there.
I probably understand the rationale for that, but would you tell us the rationale for it? Because folks that are watching are going to think we're lowering the bar again. I, I think I know the reason why you're doing it, but would you just explain it?
A kid might get a 58, and then he gets a 59, and he can't take summer school, and he just quits. And, and if that happens in one course, two courses, three courses, you know, it starts to settle in on that kid, I can't get this done. And it, and it kind of pushes him toward, you know, maybe I'll just go to job court, I'll just drop out, I'll go to work, you know. I, I think it gives, I hate to say give him a break, it gives him an opportunity.
Well, they still have to perform.
To recover, they still have to go and, and average whatever that failing grade is, 45 or above, average then with their summer school grade to be above a 16. Gives them an opportunity to make it right and, and keep moving forward in school, rather than just go, huh?
I just think it's important for you to explain that so folks understand that we're not giving anybody a pass.
Correct.
Maybe give them another bite at the apple to have one more chance to prove themselves, to get out of there.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks.
Next item, acceptable use of technology and cellphone policies. Dr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Torrey has put together a presentation, he and I have met, we've discussed this, the committee is meeting on a regular basis. Steve is prepared to go over those dates because we have those meetings set up in advance. Steve did a great job in soliciting some help from members of the community, and we have a great cross-section of people that have volunteered to be on that committee and do a lot of work to get that policy in place. So I'd like to ask Steve to come to the podium.
Mr. Torrey?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Crowe, members of the board. Yes, we are meeting in regards to the technology acceptable use policy, the cellphone and sexting policy, as well as a district BYOD policy for bringing your own device into, into the district for educational purposes. We are meeting on Mondays from 3:30 to 5:00 at the David Proudy High School Library and plan to do so pretty much through February at this point to get drafts to the board and let the board have time to review those drafts. I will be touching, based on this again in my presentation, about technology as a whole across the district in a few moments.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your efforts to open it up to all the stakeholders and to get input from as many people as possible. I've been following your emails, and although I'm not participating, that'd be a detriment to the process for technology, so you're better off without me there, but it's certainly, you're doing a great job with what you're doing so far, and I think many people are happy to be able to have the input and stuff, so. Mr. Norquist?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, this goes back when Dr. Namor was here, there was, there was a cellphone committee that we spent about three months in the high school library. There was citizens, there was teachers, there was administration, and, and we sat and hammered this thing out, and I don't know if Dr. Crowe can find the information, probably like everything else, it disappears or was never written up, but we had a policy in place for cellphones, and it's just too bad we spent a lot of time doing this and it's off or not. So I just want to make that as a point of, of what happened in the past. We did try to solve the problem, but I don't see anything about that.
Mr. Torrey?
To your point, Mr. Norquist, we do have that policy, as well does revise on a yearly basis and hadn't been, so it is being reviewed and revised with the committee as well. They have that, that policy, as well as other policies from other districts surrounding us, not only in Massachusetts, but across the country, and taking all of those policies into advisement and best practices to generate the new policy for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up, just to follow up what the board did then, if you want to look at that, but the board voted to ban cellphones in school, when you go into school, and there was penalties, get caught, whatever, phones taken away, but it was, it was well attended, and it was discussed a lot, and if you had that report, would you try to implement some of those plans? So it had, it had some teeth in it also, so I think it was a well-done job. I'm sure you can add to that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Angela?
Steve, are there, you might come up in this, but with the new access to Wi-Fi at the schools, is, are there like blocks on like websites, certain websites? Or is it just open?
For the guest Wi-Fi portal? At this point, the guest Wi-Fi portal is a pass-through to the, to the web that is, is not filtered at the high school at, at this moment. However, hopefully with the adoption of a BYOD policy, we will be able to put measures in place that allow us to filter that content. It's a mobile device manager, and what it does is it allows, allows us to have control over a personal device when it's on our network, but there's, of course, costs involved in impl- implementing those measures and policies that need to be in place prior to purchasing and just randomly installing software on users' devices.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is she going to do a report for us on an update?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, all right, we'll, the members will take a seat. Front.
No, this thing not giving me control. I don't have the control. Oh, there it goes.
Thank you, Kyle.
So, technology additions since September 1st of 2014. Two Elmo document cameras were purchased for Wire Village School, by Wire Village School. Two new smartboards for Wire Village School, purchased by Wire Village School. Six MIMO interactive boards from Knox Trail, purchased by Knox Trail Fundraising. A MakerBot 3D printer for the David Proudy CAD course, purchased with upgrade funds from the David Proudy Project. And 25 more Lenovo M73 workstations also purchased with upgrade funds. We've also added eight computers in East Brookfield Elementary School classrooms for special education use. The initial hardware purchases for the Wire Village and East Brookfield upgrade projects. We've implemented a full-time help desk with land school management software across the district. We've added an additional computer lab at Wire Village, which was 30 new units, and we added an additional computers in Knox Trail Room 109 for special education, that was six upgraded units there. Ongoing, we're in the first stages of our upgrade project at Wire Village in East Brookfield. Site surveys have been completed and the initial hardware purchased. We will be adding Wi-Fi access throughout both of the buildings and gigabit hardwire infrastructure. Three new switches in East Brookfield and 13 new switches at Wire Village, and they will be configured in the same style as David Proudy at this point. Planning stages has, have started for Knox Trail Junior High and Lake Street School upgrade projects as well, and we're getting ready to install another six computers in Knox Trail 113 for special education use. Current issues that we have, the security camera systems need to be upgraded across the districts. Systems don't currently exist at the Blue Building or East Brookfield. David Proudy system is not really functional at this time. The Knox Trail, Wire Village, and Lake Street systems are outdated and extremely low quality. District-wide VoIP phone system needs to be implemented with E911 capabilities in all classrooms, offices, and public areas. Direct 911 calling from classrooms doesn't currently exist and needs to. New and upgraded computer inventories have been depleted, need to be replenished, and the website needs to be redesigned. This is an inventory report of all our devices across the district. On the left, you have the different computer models that we have, the Lenovos, the Dells. We have a couple HPs still floating around, the donated computers from Flexcon and administrative laptops. As you'll see across the top, we have the total number of machines, the quantities that is deployed throughout the district, the quantities that are in repair, and the quantities that are in storage currently. As you can see, we only have 19 computers left in storage and seven on repair right now, so we're running a little low. This is the same for other hardware and other interactive devices, printers, copiers, monitors, smartboards, MIMO projectors, and Elmo document cameras across the district. This is all interactive devices by school, so you can see the breakdown of the devices for faculty, total number of devices in each school is at the top, then the number of faculty devices on top of the number of faculty of, at the school. Below, you have student devices, number of students in the school, so it's the number of devices over the number of students, and the ratio is below that. So at David Proudy, you have 3.1 students for every one computer, Knox Trail is 3.3, Wire Village is 5.5, East Brookfield is 5.2, and Lake Street is 12.8. Any mobile computer carts that they have with mobile projectors in each of their respective buildings, the smartboard dummies for the respective buildings, the MIMOs, and the Elmo document cameras. This is a breakdown of classroom devices for special education use by school. You can see the breakout for David Proudy, there's three rooms at David Proudy, three rooms at Knox Trail with an additional fourth being added in the next few weeks, one room at Wire Village, there is six rooms at East Brookfield, and one room at Lake Street with a dedicated special education computer in the back of the classroom, or multiple special education computers in the back of the classroom. This is a computer lab and library devices. Instructional labs are labs that a specific technology course is attached to, in which case there are students actively rotating through that lab at all times throughout the day. An open lab is a lab available in the school that teachers can sign up for to bring their whole classroom or parts of their classroom down to use it at any given time. There's rotational signup sheets that the buildings manage for that. The instructional, the number of instructional lab devices in each building and the number of open lab devices in each building. And then at the bottom, you have the number of devices in each library for each building respectively. And then for, on the Technology Policy Committee, again, just to review, we have formed a committee volunteers to revise and create district technology policies. We will be revising the acceptable use policy and the sexting cellphone policy. We will be creating a district BYOD or Bring Your Own Device policy. The committee consists of all building principals, the People Services Director, Technology Supervisor, teachers from each school, and parent volunteers from each school. And again, we meet Mondays from 3:30 to 5:00 at the David Proudy High School Library. In October, we did a survey of the student body at David Proudy High School. We received 328 surveys back. These are the four questions that we asked. Question one was, do you use classroom technology on a consistent basis? 190 responders said that they do, compared to 138 that said that they do not. That number can vary quarter to quarter because of students that are taking a technology course or not taking a technology course. Question two was if they've been making use of the new guest wireless. 248 responders said that they do use it, as opposed to 80 who didn't. The rise of smartphones are attributed to that. 76% of all surveys said that they are using the Wi-Fi on a consistent basis. Use of the technology help desk. Now, this survey was for students. Students would only typically use the technology help desk if they needed a password reset. That's why it's a large number that said they have not made use of the, the help desk compared to 65 who have. Teachers are more active clientele through the help desk. They can submit either by calling the help desk directly or submitting through our online web portal for a trouble ticket. And then overall, technology, classroom technology experience been a positive one. 264 said that it has compared to 58 who have not. On the survey, we also had an open response question. Only 30% wrote in the open response. Of that, it was 99 students. 28 said was talking about our guest Wi-Fi needed to be improved. The majority of the complaints was the sign-in process where they have to attach to our Wi-Fi, agree to our current acceptable use policy, digitally sign it by adding an email address, and then they can click accept. Once they accept that policy, then they are permitted to the outside through Internet, and all acceptable use practices and policies that are in place apply when they're using that network. 26%, 26 people said that they want to be able to use their phone, tablets, or laptops in class more often. 14 said they wanted more smartboards in the classrooms. Again, this was conducted only at David Proudy, and we only have four smartboards in that building. Eight said they wanted more access to computers and classroom technology. Six responded that they wanted to change in our website policies and restrictions, which they can, a lot of times with our website policies, if a website gets blocked, it gives them an explanation as to why the website was blocked based off of our content filter, and there's a button that they're allowed to click that's, that asks them to, they can then submit a response to us requesting that we unblock it, and then we review the policy in regards to that specific website and make a determination whether it needs to be unblocked or continue to be blocked. A lot of it is Facebook and MySpace and stuff like that that they want unblocked. And 17 were put into a miscellaneous category with concerns of... And 17 were put into a miscellaneous category with concerns of the speed of the technology to updating the campus equipment throughout and others of the like. Any questions? Go up. Not a problem, sir.
Steve, you may not have the crystal ball to give this answer, but all the things you talked about that are in the process of being put into East Brookfield and Wire Village, what's the timeframe on that approximately?
We're hoping if everything goes according to plan with the remaining hardware that needs to be purchased and ship dates of the hardware from the manufacturers, we're hoping that we'd be able to have that system up and operational before the end of school. If not, most definitely by the start of the next school year. It really comes down to access to the buildings. The subcontractors that would come in to do the rewiring part of the process to add wire drops for the wireless access points as well as the engineers, they operate on a very strict nine-to-five schedule. If you're outside of that nine-to-five, they charge a much higher rate to be off hours. Because of that, if we were to do the project during the school day with students in school, the learning environment would be impacted by having network outages and, you know, people running cables through their classroom and whatnot. So we need to coordinate not only with the schools to find what is going to be a good time, whether or not a school vacation week is appropriate for that. We also need to coordinate with the people that are coming in to assist us with the work to make sure that if we have a limited amount of time, like a four-day week for February vacation or the three-day week for the Christmas vacation, that they can get done what they need to get done in that timeframe without going into that second shift or swing shift hours.
A student that makes a request to have a site that's blocked, who does that request go to?
That request comes through our filter, and we check it on a weekly basis. And then it gets filtered through me. If it's something that is of educational value and there's a legitimate reason that they have requested to have a site unblocked, then it would then go forward through the superintendent who would make the final decision as to whether or not we would change our web filtering policy to unblock that specific site. The majority of them, like I said, are Facebook, MySpace, Twitter. They want Pinterest, they want things like that. The other large majority of them is educational sites that are truly educational, that have content blocked on them for a specific reason or another. Most of those are sites like Scholastic and PBS Kids where the embedded video in the website they're trying to view is actually held on a third-party server. So our content filter blocks that because it's making a connection outside of that website. So it blocks it. So a lot of those that come in are teachers saying, I'm trying to view this video on Barnes and Noble's website and in my classroom, and it's being blocked. Can you look at that? In which case, we just go back and review it.
Those buildings that are having a problem with 911, what's the process that they follow now if they have to call?
So 911 issues are a district-wide issue at this point. There is no building in our district, whether it's central administration or any of the outlying buildings, that can pick up a telephone and dial 911. Most of the buildings have to get to an outside line by some form or fashion prior to getting to be able to dial 911. At Lake Street, it's 99911 in order to get 911. David Proudy High School, if you're in a classroom, you have to pick up the phone on the wall, which calls the switchboard in the main office, which then a secretary has to go over, pick up the switchboard, get the message, and then dial 911 directly from the main office that way. Knox Trail, you have to call the main office, request a secretary to connect you to an available outside line, and then you can dial 911. East Brookfield is two nines and then two ones, and Wire Village is two nines and two ones.
Obviously, this is an issue that is going to require some discussion and decisions by the board in order to get this straightened away. Anybody else have any questions?
Are all of the smartboards up and running in the district?
At this moment, they are in place in the rooms, and they are functional as a projection board. However, interactive features are currently not operational. We are working on getting the appropriate licensing for the new software. The new software was, when we converted to Windows 8.1, the smartboard software that we currently have, which was Smart Notebook 10, does not run on 8.1, and our license didn't permit for the new Smart Notebook 14. It had been put off by previous administration on the purchase because we were on a 90-day trial of the new Smart Notebook 14. That trial has since run out and on 90% of our smartboards. Some of our smartboards that weren't utilized at the beginning part of the year that are now being utilized are going to run out soon. But we are, we do have a quote for the new licenses, and I know the buildings are working to secure funding to activate that license in their specific buildings.
Okay. I just have concerns because I know a lot of the smartboards are covering the classroom chalkboards, at least that's the case in my district, and I can just picture the math teachers trying to deliver instruction and having it be very frustrating for them. So the sooner the better.
Anyone else with any questions? Mr. Nodkis?
Yeah, I just want to say, on security cameras, would you give us a little overview? Do all schools, I think you said a few schools, but how come all the schools don't have security cameras on the outside of buildings? How are we talking about on security cameras?
So when I mention the security systems, each school is different. The specific numbers of cameras in each building varies by building. I believe Knox Trail has six. Do you have six in your building? Six, yes. Knox Trail has six, Lake Street has four, and I believe David Proudy has 16 cameras. East Brookfield has zero cameras. Wire Village, I believe, Lynda, do you have six? It's in three years, yeah. So I believe there's six here at Wire Village as well, and the Blue Building has no cameras. Now, there are some areas of every building that is, of course, because of the low number of cameras, not covered. One area that comes to mind instantly is the third floor of David Proudy. That floor doesn't have cameras on it. The systems that were put in were put in many, many years ago. The systems at East, there was never one put in at East Brookfield. The one put in here at Wire Village was put in when the building was built, and roughly about the same time is when Knox Trail and David Proudy got their systems as well as Lake Street.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up. On East Brookfield and the Blue House, is there plans to put in cameras specially where East Brookfield's off the road, so to say, in the Blue House where a lot of information's kept?
There's currently a budgetary allotment for security system upgrades in those buildings, in those areas, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Heather?
Not including the computers available to special education students at East Brookfield Elementary, are the only other computers available to students located in the computer lab?
Yes.
Okay. So when we're updating the wireless technology, are we looking into purchasing more wireless devices?
It's all part of a larger technology vision that we are also working on creating with the Technology Committee. We will investigate what type of a device would be suitable for each different environment. A device suitable necessarily for a K through three environment might not necessarily be the same device for a four through six environment. So we will address the environment quickly and decide which device is best suited for that environment. But the ultimate goal for the elementary schools would be to purchase carts with multiple devices on them for shared use in the buildings or dedicated use in the classrooms.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Steve.
No worse, thank you.
Our next item is negotiation update by Mr. Cludia.
Just a quick update for the board and for the general public that the district negotiating team last evening reached a tentative agreement with Unit C. That agreement at this point needs to be ratified by the entire unit, and then it will come before the school committee to be ratified here, and then it needs to be approved by the Commissioner of Education, seeing we are still under control, some control of the state. So just, it's an update on negotiations. We are moving forward, and it's been a pleasure working with Unit C. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cludia. I'd just like to say that this has taken an awful lot of work to chair that committee, and Mr. Cludia had volunteered at the outset to chair the negotiation team, and he has really done an outstanding job from the standpoint of the chair and the other members of that committee. And it's a pleasure to come to these meetings with fully prepared packet of documents, and everything is there that you need when you come forward. So thank you, Vinnie, for that effort and doing that. Okay, next item is a truck lease. The superintendent had made me aware of some issues in regards to our equipment, and she'll explain to you where we're at in regards to replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It came to my attention as soon as I arrived in district that we are in dire need of looking at a new vehicle. As everyone knows, there's one truck that is simply inoperable. And in speaking with both the maintenance people that do the maintenance on the parking lots and then talking to the people, it's become very clear that we need to do a lease. We cannot afford to buy it, so we're going to do a lease to buy. So we went to the state bid, and I was able to get some information today, which I've included here for your review. I don't know if you have specific questions on this, but it would be over a five-year term, and at the end, we would purchase it.
The superintendent explained to me that this is not the typical lease. This particular situation is where we would make payments over a five-year period, and then at the end of the fifth year, we would actually purchase the truck for a dollar so that the vehicle would then become owned by us and remain in our fleet. Some of the discussion I've had with the superintendent, the board should choose to do this, is I think it's important going forward, if we're going to make these type of capital investments, that a vehicle be assigned to whoever that person is that's going to be doing the plowing and the sanding, and that the superintendent would put in place some type of a checkoff where that person would be responsible for the maintenance, the general upkeep of the piece of equipment, and responsible for anything that happens with that piece of equipment. And I think it's important that we do that going forward as we try to replace. You know, wintertime is a very difficult time around here, and we've got a limited staff, and I think it's important that we give them the proper tools to be able to do the job. And anybody that goes out and looks at the equipment that we have out there in the yard, you would wonder how we get it registered to get it on the road and pass inspection because they certainly do have those type of issues. So the amount that the superintendent has put here may require a slightly higher, we may have to be in the 59.5 range in order to cover extended warranty programs that we may want to go after. And in her conversations, it's being advised that we do that, that we go with the extended warranties. Yes, Dr. Crowe?
Just in terms of explanation, there were a couple ways we could go. We could go, and I vetted this with a number of people across the state who run highway departments, that if we go with a vehicle that's not stainless steel bodied, that we're going to be replacing this within a number of years. They will not last. That if we invest a few thousand more upfront for the stainless steel, then we're going to be able to have this vehicle last for possibly 15 years. So instead of replacing these because of body rot, that if we maintain them properly and we get the stainless steel to start with, they last, you know, long-term. And also with the extended warranty, it provides us some protection in terms of the maintenance on the vehicles.
In regards to the possible payment of this, if the board finds an interest in going forward, Julie has identified for us a couple of accounts where the funds are available. We do have a truck travel account that does have just shy of $12,000 in it, and we also have almost $6,000 left in the parking account. I think we're talking about a $12,000 a year payment? Is it, was it in that ballpark?
It's somewhere in the ballpark of, it's probably going to be $13,000.
Around $13,000. So currently, we have the money there this year. The question to the board is, because it's the first time it's coming forward, but it was really due to an emergency nature. Both our vehicles have gone down in the couple of small storms that we've had so far. So what's the feeling from members and any questions that anyone has in regards to this for the superintendent?
Mr. Chairman.
It also includes the plow as well. Mr. Nodkis?
Mr. Chairman, I get three questions. First of all, I just want to say, like you said previously, have one person in charge for the maintenance and upkeep so we know that it's being done in the past. You drive a truck and get out and leave it there and whatever. Second thing is on this bid contract, the superintendent check on the snow plow? I think we have some plows left over, and there's some good condition. I saw up top of the hill that they're not being used or they could be used, and we could save that money on the plow. So would you check on that? And the second thing is, you're 100% right on the stainless steel body, that will last a long time instead of having a metal body. And I think we should go for that. But if she could check and see, the fourth thing is, is on the old truck, is that going to be put out for advertisement for bid? And if we don't get the right price, will we scrap ourselves? What would be the outcome of the trading trucks? I know they don't take trade-ins, so that's off the map.
Okay, we got a whole host of questions in here. First one, Dr. Crowe, would be, what are we going to do with the old trucks?
My understanding is the old truck will be of no value that I'm aware of, but I'm certainly willing to look into if we could scrap it. But I know that nobody will want it because it's not able to even be put on the road. At this point, it doesn't leave the parking lot, basically.
And in regards to the issue of the plow, I did see on the, we're around $65, $6,900 for a plow. My only concern, Mr. Nodkis, would be, not that I'm looking to spend money, that foolishly I would almost prefer to look at selling that plow and getting whatever money we could get for it. I don't know that I really want to go forward and spend $58,000 or $59,000 and then start piecemealing this truck with other pieces of equipment that we have. I mean, I know we're going to utilize the same sander, and the superintendent has made sure with the carrier that our sander will fit in the truck that we're buying. But to your point, I think we need to go through that inventory list and see what we have and what we can get rid of and have that money to put towards the future costs here. I think, does that answer all your questions, Kurt, that you had? I think those are the...
Yes, I guess so. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions in regards or comments to it, thoughts about it?
I just have one last question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Nodkis.
If we do buy the truck, when's it going to be delivered? Would you have any idea, Mrs. Superintendent?
I do not. I spoke with the agency today, and he's going to get back to me tomorrow and see how quickly he can get it. Stainless steel body is going to be the holdup because it's not in inventory. They have to wait for that to come.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the feeling of the board? Is there a motion? Are you interested in detaining this?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, motion.
For the superintendent to make the lease as presented.
And the amount would be for 59.5 that you feel will cover with the extended warranty?
I believe it will, yes.
So the motion from Angela to go have Dr. Crowe go follow with the lease. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludia, further discussion? Any, no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Okay. Next issue, in your packet, you have a report from Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. It's informational only. You also have a personnel update of hirers and retirees. Anyone have any questions in regards to that? If not, we'll move on. You also have an enrollment report. The school newsletters are in your packet as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodkis.
I just say, on enrollment package, I did see School Choice 54. I believe it's, it was somewhere around that last monthly meeting, so I just want to say it's looking better. We're getting more kids to come in instead of having out in the street that they're fleeing here. I think this is a good sign that they're coming back.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone?
On the school newsletter, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did see where Mr. Bayshant got Level 3 changed to Level 2, and I want to congratulate him on that. We want to get all our schools out of Level 3 and back into the real world.
Okay, thank you. Next item, hearing for visitors. Any visitors looking to be recognized? Seeing none. School committee comments, recommendations for future agenda topics. Ms. Messia.
I would just like to say thank you to the town of East Brookfield Highway Department for assisting during the ICE event that we had last week. for assisting during the ICE event that we had last week. And also, I'd like to say thank you to the staff at Eastbrook Field Elementary for coming out for a great Christmas concert. Was it last week? I think it was last week. I'm sorry, I forget Mr. Tomlin. But thank you, teachers, for coming out at night. I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodkis.
I'd just like to say, I was at a breakfast Saturday at Wyre Village with Mr. Cludia and Ms. Napton, and we served breakfast with the staff, and we had a good time. I enjoyed it, and there was a lot of people come out. Santa Claus came, and there was a lot of young kids that were really amazed. I mean, you look in their eye, and they couldn't believe it, so I think it was a good idea. And the second thing is, I think last year in our audit report, there was a question made that we should get a report through the superintendent to treasurer on the parking fee accounts of the high school, and each school has revolving funds, like I know Lake Street had a PALS account, I don't know what the other schools have, but just give us an update of what's in there. The parents' thing are like Lake Street, pause. That's all spent by the, each school and the parents. It's their money, it's not ours, but just give us an update of where it's, how much is in there and where it's spent so we could have some idea of what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Nodkis. That will be in our packet for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Just, I just wanted to say that I got to do the breakfast, I got to go to two concerts, and I have to say that that's like the best part of this job, is seeing these kids and all their talent, and I hope I can get to the high school on Thursday. I'll try to stretch my schedule to do that because it's really the best part of this job. It's awesome. So all the schools that I was at, they did a great job, and I wish I could get to everything, but just thank you all for everything you do, especially, I didn't realize in Eastbrook Field, man, they do it at night, which is why I was able to do Eastbrook Field, and that's a lot for those teachers to all show up, and it was a great program, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Angela. Anyone else? The only thing that I, I'm not sure, Dave, if you mentioned it, but I was told today that Becky Bousier was nominated or given award by WSIRS as Teacher of the Month.
Great.
Yeah, so she does a great job, so congratulations. If no one else has anything, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Angela, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vinnie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also voted. Thank you.
Number one, Dave, for my thanks. They will have...